Action item number five. This is a review of less than program inventory to include which items the town would like to keep and possibly sell, as well as the process of selling acquired items from the less than program. Long ago, when our town manager first took this job, he and I discussed the less than program at length. And his immediate reaction back then was to get rid of it all, begin again, and do it right. I don't know if that was your exact word, but it was pretty darn close. At the time, I didn't completely agree because there were a few pieces of equipment that I felt were useful. Commissioner Persinger, long ago, asked that we determine what we would like to keep and that we make a plan to dispose of the rest. Since then, I've learned a lot. The town of Delmar has found a way to work together to make the program work for them in many different levels. Legal and proper sale of free military surplus equipment obtained through the program has been a powerful tool for the town of Delmar and many other towns in Delaware and across the nation. However, in Delaware, or in Dewey Beach, things were done poorly. In 2017, the commissioners tried to wrap their arms around this issue. Commissioner Persinger, again, led the way with smart and thoughtful leadership, but we needed a manager. Just over a year ago, we hired Scott Koenig to be that manager. In the years since Mr. Koenig has started working with the town, we have made great progress despite an angry minority that finds fault in all that we've done. I still find it odd that in the ranks of the angry minority are people that served the town over a decade ago that were when these things were done poorly. And they don't seem to have accepted any responsibility, but they're willing to take shots at us. Others that serve now and today understand that we have been involved in this program for many years. The truth is, the truth is clear. More should have been done in March and April and May of 2016, but it was not. Each day that we do our jobs well, we begin to regain the public trust. To that end, I agree with Mr. Koenig's original thoughts on this from last year. We need to get back to zero. It took more than a decade to get where we are with all of this stuff. We need to get this done, and I understand that perhaps there will be a few items that we should keep, but I would like to sell what we can, scrap the metal that we can, and throw the rest away. In this, I am including all the equipment that was acquired, that is currently at shooting Let's get to zero so that we can begin again and build the town that the voters and the stakeholders of our town can trust. With that, I'll open it up for discussion. Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Dow, Commissioner Mayor.
All right. We need to define what, how we're going to get rid of this because the criticism is going to come.
Go ahead.
If we sell something for a million dollars, somebody's going to say, we could have gotten more than a thousand. What are we determining is, how do we make this crystal clear to the public that it's sold, it was competitively sold? We bid them out and we're going back to what we're talking about in the charter. Are we bidding these things out? Are we doing an auction on it? We have vendors come to town to buy it. You know, we need to find, you know, dot the i's across the t's and how we're going to do it in an open way, don't have the criticism. And, you know, we all know that's going to happen. We sold something for a thousand, somebody's going to say, we could have gotten more than a thousand. They should have bid more than a thousand, right?
What's interesting about the role we have is that 49.7% of the people will disagree no matter what. So I don't fear that conversation. Mr. Cook has a comment, and then we'll go right there.
Mr. Mayor, unless I'm saying differently, I would probably agree with 99% of what they said. I think, though, we need to make a decision what we're going to do. We never have finally said, I don't think. And Commissioner Persinger might prove me wrong on this because I can't remember the various different motions that we passed, but we never have decided actually what to do. You know, we've said we need lists, we need this, we need recommendations. You know, it would be my thought that we would just sell as much as possible that the town manager recommends to sell and with a report to the commissioners. But we have to kind of have that first before we talk about how we're going to sell.
I think I, it's his thoughts, but I think I can help with that because he was pretty clear. So I'll go right there.
Yeah, did you have comments that you wanted to make?
I'll make mine after you. I thought you were going to ask questions.
Well, then, actually, I'd rather hear your comments because it may change what I was saying.
So, so again, there are two separate spreadsheets that were posted as supplemental documents. And the chief and I have been going through some items very methodically. The items have to go back to the government. So there were some cameras, there were some weapons that we have, and we have been methodically sending them back to the government. And it's one item at a time so that we can track all the way through the paperwork because we have to send it, they have to receive it, they have to acknowledge it, and we update the spreadsheet. So we're going through very methodically and essentially returning stuff. And we're down roughly from 2,634 items to 2,187 items with the initial purchase value currently tracking at about $3.1 million. And as we return something and we get some of the original documentation for it, the numbers change slightly. So what we may have had on here for a site of $350, when we return it, it may have actually been a $383 item. So we update the numbers, try to track all the way through. Originally, when I posted the March 6th inventory, I identified a handful of items that I said keep this item. And Commissioner Persinger had asked for clarification on those things. And the more I think about this stuff and how toxic this program has been and how divisive it is, ultimately, my recommendation is until we get rid of every piece of this equipment, we get down to only a couple pieces of equipment, we're going to have to live with the toxic environment associated with this program. And I go back to the question that I've been asking myself since early March has been, if we had to buy any of this stuff with our dollars, would we have bought it? And my answer is, I don't think we would have bought any of it. So ultimately, I think we need to methodically discharge the entire inventory down to zero. And I think the easiest way to do that is there are items that are just considered disposable, and we're starting to work through some of those disposable items. But there are other large items. We had talked potentially about having an auction at the lot. My concern about that is, is that we don't own the lot, and we'd have to invite people to the lot, and that can create a major problem for me administratively and for us, just operationally legally. The state uses a website, I think it's actually called Government Bid or something, Government Deals, where they sold a number of boats from the Indian River inland. They upload stuff to the website. There's a fee that you pay per item, but it's completely hands-off. We upload the information, we describe it, we put pictures in there, and it goes out all across the nation. So if somebody in California wants to buy sight unseen this piece of equipment, they send the cashier's check, and they send however they're going to transport it, and it gets loaded and transferred to them. That gives you the most exposure, it's the least hands-off for us, and it gets the, in my mind at least, it's the easiest way to say that was the market value of it. If I had a local auction of this stuff, I'm likely only to get local buyers, and while that, that's possible, maybe we should do that, I would like to offer a number of this equipment on these large distribution websites first and see if we get takers from that methodology. And then, I don't have objections to having a local auction, I just think we have to really think about where we do it, how we do it, you know, what's the goal of it. My reluctance in selling this stuff is, I go back to, this stuff was acquired for resiliency and response to disasters, whether they're natural disasters, man-made disasters, but that was the purpose of this release program. The government didn't need this equipment anymore, it was deemed surplus, it was being used beyond their need.
Useful life.
Or useful life. So the government developed a pathway to get it to little villages that could potentially utilize it for their operations. I don't like to think of this program as a windfall because I don't think that that was the initial intent of it. So I'm really reluctant to say, I want to sell all this stuff and make a lot of money off of it. I want to get rid of it and get a reasonable price for it. But the sooner I think that we discharge these items, and I don't mean rush to do it, I mean methodically do it. And so we only own a few pieces of property. We own a very small warehouse site in West Verhoeve, and we own Town Hall, I guess we leased the lifesaving station lane, I think.
Big town, yeah.
And we own the area where Town Hall and the annex are. So we don't have a lot of storage area. If we had a large storage area for this stuff, I would feel differently because we could go out, we could touch it, we could exercise the engines and stuff like that on a regular basis. But we don't have the manpower to manage all of these items, especially when they're not in one central location. And we're also fighting the element of time and the weather because this stuff is, some of it was new when we got it, it's because it was surplus. A lot of it's not new, a lot of it's older, and it's rusting every day by sitting where it's sitting. So, you know, I have various feelings on this program, but I think we got into the program with good intentions, evaluated from us. And the easiest way to regain the public confidence in all of this stuff is to get rid of all of the equipment. And then, if we decide at some point we need something else, then we go back through the approved process. With that being said, we are still in the program, and we still do monitor some of this stuff. And, for example, there is potentially get ammo off of this program for training purposes. And it is only for, not be used for regular service weapon use, it is only for qualification training. So we are still in the queue for that. If that stuff actually becomes available to us, we're going to take our turn in the program, and we would have to take possession of it, we would have to manage it, we would have to report on it. But this program has become so toxic and such a distraction that I think it's doing a disservice to our staff that comes to work every day to do their regular jobs. It becomes a very large distraction for people who want to criticize stuff. And you go back to, how do you know you're going to get the highest and the best price? And the answer is, we do not know that for certain. But we know if we transfer it, then we discharge it, we no longer have any responsibility for it. And if I have a process that I can show the commissioners, if we got $50 for this, we put it on the website, and the bid was open for a week and that's all we got, then I think that's the best I can do, and I think that meets the public scrutiny test, so.
I think you were, Dale, asking.
No, Eric, for me.
Go right ahead.
Okay. I appreciate your comments, and I'm glad that I asked you to go first. Because I can modify some of what I want to say. Just by way of history, go back to November 2017. That's when we were kind of in the dark about the program and then we asked for full inventory. It took until March of this problem year for us to begin to get that inventory, and I think it was April 14th of 2018, we also had a complete spreadsheet that we were able to put together. It didn't have all the data elements that we asked for. We asked for both the justification that was given to the less than program for acquiring the equipment, as well as the actual use. We got nothing on actual use. The only thing that we got was the, what was given to the program, and that was given to us on paper, and we had to actually assemble that into a spreadsheet. So then, moving forward then, August 10th, 2018, we unanimously passed a motion, and part of that motion said, within the next five months, the town manager shall work with the police department to identify items that were required through the law enforcement support office and are now owned by the town for which there are specific identifiable and demonstrable needs. The inventory of items included as a supporting document for the April 14, 2018 commissioners' meeting shall serve as the basis for this determination. The list of these items and their use shall be provided to the commissioners. So when I saw this spreadsheet on, I guess it was probably March 6th, and even on the working copy of March 26th, I was really unhappy to see that we had a list of items that were going to be kept, but we had absolutely no idea how they were going to be used, someone had never told us. It struck me as foot-dragging, I'm not sure how else to describe it, but it was disturbing. There were additionally, there are, I believe I said there were, there were seven, six actually, that we designated as key items. There were actually seven, I miscounted them. There were six as being considered for selling, and then there were four additional items, one of which was at the Selbyville firing range and three at the Bridgeville firing range. I could not imagine how, after eight months, there could be any doubt about what was going to be sold and what wouldn't be sold. That, again, bothered me tremendously. Why there was equipment at Selbyville and Bridgeville, particularly three tractors at the Bridgeville range, I had no idea. We originally found out about this in April of 2018. The explanation was that they do use two ranges, and for those, one of the ranges' maintenance is a shared responsibility among municipalities using the range. I found that explanation curious, I didn't seek any additional detail at that time. But on the 12th of March of this year, I'd been sent the email to the town manager and asked a series of questions. Is there a need for any tractor to satisfy whatever maintenance needs are created by the police department's use of the ranges? And I had a little bit, first of all, I've never been to a firing range, so I'm not sure what maintenance, what type of maintenance is necessary. Is there a need for three tractors at one range? Who is operating these tractors? What's the police department's arrangement regarding the use of these ranges? Are these ranges owned privately or by a law enforcement agency privately owned? Why would the police department have maintenance responsibility? Does Dewey Beach have any ownership interest in these ranges? Are the tractors being used at a competitive cost of the use of these ranges? Does the police department plan to give up ownership of this equipment? I don't have answers to any of those questions. And I think it's reasonable to ask, and it's reasonable to ask for a response to those questions. I will modify my position somewhat on this, given the fact that the town manager is now, seems to be taking a position that we should just dispose of all of this equipment. I certainly don't have a problem with that. If we're going to do that, it needs to be done in a very orderly way. Again, my suggestion all along has been, let's start at the top with those items that have the highest value, at least in terms of the acquisition value that the military assigns to it, and just move down the list and do this in a very orderly way. Get the best price that you can, or at least use the most reasonable method possible, if that's a national effort, or if that's a local auction, I think either process could be fine. Needs to be well documented, it needs to be with as much sunlight as possible. But that's what I think we need to do to move forward. I, again, would like to put a timeframe on this. We're already at the end of the timeframe that we originally set in August for disposing of all the equipment.
I think it was beginning, right?
You know, we were supposed to have everything done by eight months.
And sold?
Dispose of and sold, that's right. That was the motion that we all unanimously passed. I would like to set another timeframe of about three months, another three months, to have this process completed, get rid of all this equipment. If there really is something that the town would like to keep, I don't have an objection to that, but tell us specifically how you're going to use it.
Well, I'm going to pitch that in, and I'm sure you will want to as well, is, I was here for all of that, and I understand what the goals you were trying to make, and I felt that I communicated some of this information at that time and as we moved forward. But Scott was always very clear that zero was his number, and that he had no desire to keep any of it, but that he wanted to work with staff and to find out if there's anything needed to keep. In the meantime.
And my point is, we've had eight months to do that. It's time, let's fish your question.
You know, as you can tell from my notes that I just gave a moment ago, Independence Day is a lovely day to get to zero, and I know that might be an unrealistic goal, but I'm with you, I would love to have this done in an orderly fashion and quickly. And I'm not trying to assign blame whatsoever because I've watched as we've taken the steps we need to take, and this doesn't happen overnight. Commissioner Mayor.
Is there staff needed to upload these pictures onto whatever site? Take the pictures or?
I'm not asking for any additional staff, no.
I mean, is this going to be all this exclusively your time?
No, it's going to be the police department's staff at all times. So we're not asking for any more staff. And again, so if you'll be willing to answer some of these questions. Somebody's labeling on this spreadsheet is inconsistent with what you actually see when you go out there. So what's labeled as a tractor varies. There are lawn tractors that are labeled as tractors, there are tractor tractors that are labeled as tractors, there are, in one case, there's a disc that you essentially use for grading blade that is listed as a tractor. So some of the annotation in this spreadsheet is very, very misleading, and so you actually go and inspect that piece of equipment. And I didn't change the original annotation, I've kind of footnote it, similar to what we said about the budget if you go into the notes. But, you know, there was a point in time where I was hopeful that I could get to a point where I was comfortable keeping any of this stuff. And so the only piece of equipment that, on this list, that I see on a regular basis that I can point out is the Humvee that sits across from the Town Hall. I know it works, I know we drive it, we move it around every now and then. So that would be one of the last items that I would release. But I have to tell you, if we get to July and Humvees have been hot and somebody wants it, I would be more than happy to release it and just to, again, get away from the entire stigmatism of this program. And there's, the stuff that I listed as potentially keep or keep this item was stuff that in my head could fit on property that we own, and that if we were going to consider keeping something, that's the stuff that we should consider keeping. But as we've progressed at talking about some of this stuff, and my fear is, is that we have it, and then we go to get it, and we can't use it. It's either infeasible for us to get it to the site, or we're trying to get it to, or we get it there, and it doesn't work, or we get it there, we start it, and it works for 10 minutes, and then it stops for a minute. So the technical ability for us to respond with this stuff, especially the equipment that I, equipment is what I'm really referring to, there's probably, if you wiped out the first 50 or so items on this list, you probably wipe out 2.6 million of the 3 million that's left. So there are a lot of items on here, and I had proposed to Commissioner Persinger a while ago to kind of wipe out the stuff that I consider disposable or demented. And he raised concerns about how do we justify that, and how do we publicly communicate that? And what that did was, it took, it kind of inverted everything. It took us down to, I want to remember the number, 400 or 500 items, maybe with a million dollars about, or two million dollars about, two and a half million dollars. To me, it was logical, but as a commissioner, he felt it wasn't something that he could effectively communicate. And that's where I have to, I have to be able to communicate everything that I do on this spreadsheet. So I don't know how long once we start uploading this stuff, I'll come back to the commissioners and report how quickly this stuff is going to go. Some of it may go quickly, some of it may, my fear is, is that some of it won't go at all, and then we'll be in the position where we're just going to have to take it.
Scrap metal, or doldrums, yeah. I think it's one of the four.
So here's a scenario, Commissioner. So the very first item is shown here, 246,000, 246?
Oh, it's the original purchase.
Right. So that goes to auction, and let's just say someone, no one's really interested in it, and someone offers us $50. So to meet the timelines to sell it, we should accept the $50 and move on. Or, we think that's a, how are we going to determine that? You have micromanaged this.
Let's say we use, let's say it's used in online auction, and somebody's willing to pay $50 for it and come get it and transport it to wherever they want. Assuming that the auction period went, we clocked through, and there was only one or two bids or whatever, but there was a real bid, and they send a check for $50, that was a cashier's check, they own it. I mean, my feeling is that they, it is what it is at that point. I can't, if we had a site auction and somebody, you know, the bidding started at $50, and one person raised their hand, and that was the end, and it closed out, it's no different.
Our people are looking for bargains, no question.
Well, the site auction, not only the liability issues, and I'll jump right in, you as next, and I'll come right over there, is, you're also, you worry about our small-town world that we live in, and would the site auction lead us to friends and family that come to the auction and say, I love this piece or that piece, and suddenly something sells ridiculously cheaply? Where on the online auction, they have to compete against everybody in the world, so I really appreciate what he's, I almost got a commission.
We're going to be, what we get is what we get.
I think we need to be, and I think we, critically important that we as commissioners don't micromanage that process, because otherwise, we're never going to sell all this stuff. And that's why I'm, I'm taking a very aggressive approach, and I think, sell it, scrap it, trash it, that's our, that's the mantra that I think, and get to zero. Except for the Humvee, because I like that Humvee too. But I'm just saying that. Commissioner Cook.
Well, I plan on talking.
I'll be over there.
I plan on discussing at the end of the conversation because.
Commissioner comments?
No, at the end of this conversation.
Oh, okay.
But, but one, I think, we as politicians, even though we're small-town politicians, we as politicians tend to, we are a small town, and we're a politician. We tend to use words that we shouldn't, and I do it as much as the rest of you. But to hear foot-dragging without a preference to it, and to hear toxic, to hear some terms that we used earlier when you made your argument about people that disagree, I think we need to be careful. The police, before, I would say also that people are not going to enjoy what I say because I'm not 100% on this side, 100% on that side. I think you have to take a look at it overall, and the police in the beginning did us a great favor, did this town an absolute great favor and got involved in this program. I've been involved in this program by every capacity at times, talking to the chief, the present chief, and I've made comment to the previous chief. And I ran, helped run a program like this in the Boys Club, because the Boys Club, I told you before, gets in this program before even municipality, they're considered an educational institute. The problem, the program is not toxic, that was said earlier.
No.
The program is toxic, but the process became a problem. The program, we should stay in it and take full advantage of it, because the police were right, this has helped the town. The problem is, there was no oversight or lack of oversight as things drew out over many years. I'm sure if you would ask any of the police chiefs that were involved in this, they felt they were doing what was right for the town at the time. And little by little, town manager and mayor, including myself, failed to keep an eye on the program. We failed in our duty to keep an eye on the program. And the police process got more and more loose, if we want to call it that, because they were winning it, trying to do what they thought was best. That doesn't make them right, and it certainly wasn't right for us to allow the program to get as loose as it got. to get as loose as it got. But we have to be careful what terms we use. And, you know, there was foot dragging. I don't think it was deliberate. I think it was, I don't think it was deliberate at all. I think they just feel that they're overwhelmed. They're going to do their present job and they'll get to this as they get to, you know, whoever they are, whether it be the town manager, whether it be the chief of police, or whoever. But the process has gone on way too long. You know, I can't justify eight months and we're still where we are. I think it needs to, I think we need to move on. I would never be one to say, "Get rid of it all." But at this stage, I'm ready to say, "Get rid of it all." And get what you can get. And if there's something that's so obvious that they should keep, if they better have a really valid reason to keep.
Or at least a damn good reason.
Yeah. I just think, it's nothing 100% one way or the other. I just think we need to understand that and not lay blame or anything else. Just let's move on with this program and let's stay in this program. Let's not throw out the, that's the saying, there's baby with a bathwater. So, that's it.
One more comment, we're going to move on, unless there's...
I've never even spoke of this. And if you wish to, you can go right there. Yeah. For this program, if it's done responsibly, I worked with Commissioner Persinger to create a lease-up policy that we can live with and the town managers get use out of it. So, I wouldn't want to return everything. For instance, there's a shop vac. You probably passed by and they got out of the lease-up program, I believe, and they use it to clean their cars. Something like that is useful. There's a need. So, if there's a legitimate need, we should keep it. If not, get rid of it. And I would assume there'd be a large quantity we will be getting rid of. There's some unexplained questions, like the town spent $4,000 this year moving stuff, the coastal towing bothering for hundreds of thousands. But getting to Commissioner Persinger when he said the firing range, I also had questions. Does the town have insurance on those vehicles? Who touches those vehicles? Is it Dewey Beach police or the firing range staff? And I've been to firing ranges. I qualified on the firing ranges. I've never had to bring a tractor in order to use a firing range. But getting back to the selling everything with three months, I would totally agree with that. And I think you could do the best of both worlds. You sell it online, but you also advertise that link on the Town of Dewey Beach website, Kate Gazette, State of Delaware, and maybe Washington DC or Philly newspaper, and send it to all the local police departments. There's an advantage of, if you're local, you don't pay shipping and it's easier to move the equipment. So, if you do it online with just getting the word out locally, you get the best of both worlds. And I believe three months is a great firing range. You should do it, just get rid of the stuff you have no need for. Starting and especially including the shooting range equipment, which is stored on private shooting ranges. That needs to go. It has a liability to the town.
One more.
I, we've had questions all along about, the town gets this equipment. What are they using it for? And that's still an open question. You know, we set up a timeframe of five months to get a specific list of items that are going to be checked. And then, to include that with, what are we going to do with it? And I'm still okay with that. You know, if the town wants to provide us with that, if there are some items that are particularly useful, if the town wants to keep, you know, tell us about that. And tell us what you're going to use it for. And that, that's what has never happened. And, you know, I just, I can't think of any excuse. I can't think of the police department or any of the other staff being so overwhelmed that within eight months, they give us a list of seven items that are going to be kept. We don't tell us what they're going to do with it. And still have six that they consider selling. I still, we might have questions resolved about the firing ranges. Two of the highest value assets are sitting in those ranges. You know, I'd like to know why they're there and what we're doing with them. And, you know, if we're going to get rid of them, what's the process for doing so?
Well, in that conversation...
Well, let me, as we move forward, as we dispose of these things, I know there's going to be a question of, did we get the right value for it? But I think we need to make this as open a process as possible. You know, Commissioner Bauer used the first item on here, which is the highest acquisition value on the list. And it's already designated as to be scrapped. So, if there isn't a buyer out there for it and, you know, we have that information, keep a record of that information accompanied with a picture and you can clearly see a scrap of rusted metal, I think that's going to be justification enough for whatever value we're going to get in that piece of equipment. So, you know, as open as possible, as well documented as possible. But, you know, let's get going. Let's get this out of the way.
I have to ask you, Derek, a question, though. If we're going to sell the tractors that are at the shooting range, do we really need the answers to all those questions?
I don't know. We might.
I don't know if we have the work necessary to get this done.
Well, I don't know what the status is.
You said the same statement a couple of times about the number of months that it's taken to get to where we are today. And I have nothing but respect for the work that's gone into where we, how we've gotten to today. But I think it's time to get off the pot. I didn't use the first part, just so, you know, clearly didn't use the first part of that statement. I think it's time to move.
You pointed me. I used fishy cut, babe.
Okay. I think, well, my opinion is that I appreciate and have nothing but respect for all the work you've done to help us to get to where we are today. And I've said it several times in my statement that I made, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for your hard work. We didn't have a manager for a year in that process. We've got a manager now. Things are getting better. It's time to get this done. And I love the Independence Day theme of being done. I don't know if it's even humanly possible, based on what I've already seen and how hard it's going to get to where we are right now.
Well, maybe.
But I don't want to have this be another hour-long conversation that's nothing that we're even going to vote on today. So, I think, we've discussed. It's been a great conversation once more. I think you've got the feeling of the commissioners. We've had lots of comments from the public in the past about this. But I have to ask Commissioner Persinger. If the only piece of equipment that, I don't want to keep calling Commissioner coming, and I know that was insulting. I don't need to do that to you. But if the only piece of equipment that he's told us that he has any desire to keep is the Humvee, do we really need to go into explaining? I can answer many of those questions about why the things are at the firing range. But do you also need answers to all the questions? Or are we selling it? Which is, or is it both?
Well, I'm assuming we're going to sell. So, that means we pull it back in some way or, you know...
Sell it or reciprocate.
I think it's a combination of, I need to answer the questions. And the full answer may be, we're using it for this, but we're selling it. And I don't have any objection to answering those questions.
But does that have any implication on our...
Whether we're sellers or not.
Yeah, I mean, if we're...
So, let me answer in kind of high level. If we're not, if we were contributing equipment, we're part of a quote-unquote fee to use the property for that. If we pull back the equipment, then we just may have to pay $1,500 or $2,000 a year to use the property, if that's what the cost is. So, that's the risk there. And I have to say, like I said, initially, I thought it was a good idea just to leave the equipment there. But the more I think about it, the more I just send a $1,000 check, then have to worry about, A, where is it? Who drove it? What's my liability for it? What shape is it in? What happens if it stops work? I mean, there's, I can come up with 50 questions that I can't answer myself. And so, that's why, in the end, I'm okay getting rid of every stitch of this equipment. And if I need a dump truck, I'm going to call, I'm going to go on the phone book and I'm going to call whoever's the first dump truck driving company. And I'm going to call them, "Come, bring me a dump truck." Or I'm going to go down to Georgia Lynch and say, "Hey, can you bring a dump truck down the street?"
Well, and if you're working from top to bottom, and it's top in terms of the most highest value, in terms of acquisition value, we're going to quickly get to a point where you're going to get to those disposable items. And I was reluctant to let that, put those things aside because in previous auctions, previous equipment that has been sold from this program,